Inkster City Council Meeting, September 16th, 2019 is called to order. Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Praise the Lord, City Council, Citizens of Inkster. Let every head bow. Dear precious Lord, we come together today to just do the things that you have called us to do, Lord. Lord, we have been in a drought here in the city and we're looking for that place we can go where we can celebrate that we have overcome, Lord. Lord, we're looking that we can be able to do business as men and be able to move our city forward, Lord, and we bind the hands of the adversary that tends to raise its head every move we begin to make, Lord. So right now, we put a hedge of protection around our first responders, our police department, our city officials, Lord. Lord, we want to allow anyone to come in and to do them any harm that we can control, Lord. But right now, as we begin to talk about those things that can move us forward, Lord, let us talk about the things that are able to benefit all men that are here in the city and women in the city of Inkster, Lord. Those things that are able to be done that we can all celebrate and be glad that we were able to come together as a community, Lord. Lord, you know what we have need of and we ask that you send the resources here. People that can plant things that's able to grow, things that are able to mature, things that are able to show that we have value in our city and in our people and the property that we have, Lord. So right now, Lord, we have a mindset to change and to do better with the things that you have given us to care for. So right now, under your name, we call out those things that are not manifested yet and we know that there's things coming, but right now, Lord, we need you to guide us, lead us, and protect us, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen and amen.
Mayor Nolan.
Here.
Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilman Oden is absent today. He has an excused absence. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Paul Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have six present tonight when we do our before.
Everyone had a chance to look at their agenda?
Yep.
Do we need to add anything? Delete? Modify? Do we have a motion?
A move that we accept the agenda as printed.
Support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Passes. Mary McLendon, come on up.
Glenn Anderson's office. I usually forget Mary, but not today.
You're getting better, Mayor. Thank you so much. I'm Mary McLendon from the Office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, and it's always a pleasure to be in the fine city of Inkster. And I bring you greetings to the mayor and to the council and the other dignitaries that are here tonight. I won't be before you long because I know you don't like all of that. You want us to get to the point. And I just want to remind you of the coffee hours. They have reconvened. The next one will be October the 14th, and in Inkster is from 12 to 1:00, and it's at the Western Wayne Family Healthcare Center, which is at 2700 Hamilton Boulevard in Inkster. And everybody's welcome to come and be a part of the meeting to share information and to also bring information as well. Everybody's welcome to attend. And I want you to know, it's a pleasure for the Commissioner to serve District Number 12, which has Inkster, Garden City, and also Westland in the district. And if he can be of any service to you, he certainly is, it's a pleasure for him to do so. I want you to know, he's a member of the Committee on Ways and Means. That committee is responsible for the oversight of the budget for Wayne County. So that's currently what they're doing, looking at the 20, the current budget for the new year that's coming up. It will end September 30th, but there's no concerns that that budget will not be completed by that time. So we want you to know that that's where he's doing his due diligence right now to make sure that we have a good budget for all in Wayne County. So again, it's a pleasure to be here. That's all I have for you tonight, and thank you, thank you, thank you for remembering, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we have Lisa Hicks Clayton from Senator Betty Jean Alexander's office.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, as well as other dignitaries in the residents of Inkster. I want to share an update from Senator Alexander. A trio of Michigan legislators last week introduced three bills that would eliminate redlining in auto insurance system, increase transparency in premium setting process, and aid consumers in comparison shopping. Senator Winnie Brinks of Grand Rapids, Senator Betty Jean Alexander, and Senator Jeremy Moss of Southfield announced the bills, which are amendments to Public Act 218, the Insurance Code of 1956. This was introduced on September 5th and are posted online, so you're able to view those at legislature.mi.gov. Senate Bill 499 bans the use of territories as a rating factor by auto insurance companies when setting ratings in the cost of auto insurance. Senate Bill 499 is introduced by Senator Betty Jean Alexander and would implement a lasting ban on redlining in Michigan, according to the senators that are cosponsoring. Public Act 21 of 2019, which took effect on June 11th prohibits the use of zip codes in rate setting, but the new law still allows insurance companies to consider territories, which would continue to allow unfair rates based on a person's address. Senate Bill 499 will prohibit insurers from grouping auto risk by territory. People in Detroit and the surrounding areas are already paying far too much for auto insurance because these companies are permitted to discriminate based on non-driving related factors. As Alexander said in her statement, "It is unfair and unreasonable for companies to target communities of color and charge them inflated premiums simply because of where a person lives." And I wanted to share our office phone number if anybody has any questions or concerns to call the office of 517-373-0994. I'll repeat that, 517-373-0994. And also, I know it was mentioned already about Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson's office hours. Senator Alexander shares those offices with Glenn Anderson, so we welcome everyone there as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Could you give us the state bill, the Senate bill numbers again?
Yes. Senate Bill 499 is the proposed Senate bill to remove the redlining. Yes. And that was recently introduced on September 5th, 2019. And what it does is it goes to amend Public Act 218, which is the Insurance Code of 1956. So this is really an attempt to really address those issues because with the bill that was passed early this year, the insurance bill, it did not take it out completely. It left territories, which is discriminatory. So this is actually the real attempt to fix that problem for people because many of our drivers were paying way too much, and it is discriminatory. All right, any other questions?
Yeah. Could you list the other two public acts you named? One was 2019 and then there was one.
Yes, so there's Public Act 218 of 1956, the bill that's, Public Act 21, which is the one that passed early in the year of 2019, and it took effect June 11th, that one did. And so this one is Senate Bill 499. And again, you can go to legislator.mi.gov if you would like to review those, you know, and see the language. All right, any other questions? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you. We have no presentations tonight. We're going to move down to consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? Need to make any corrections? Any of you have a motion?
Motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Passes. Boards and Commissions. Sure. You guys get the email regarding the Board of Review? Do we have a nomination?
We nominated Peggy Bishop for Board of Review.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
So moved.
You going to second the motion?
I'll second.
All right. Do we have our information on?
I don't know if I have it.
Peggy, did you already turn in the application?
I'm sorry?
You already filled out the one-page application to sit on the Board of Commission?
For the tax, yeah.
Yeah.
Not yet.
Okay, we can't vote then.
Nope.
But the nomination, you've just been nominated, so can you get that back into us?
I sure will.
And at the next meeting, we'll vote on it. Barbara Cooper, did you turn in your piece of paper?
I'm sorry.
Did you turn in your application?
For the DDA.
For the DDA?
I'm not yet.
Okay. Okay. So you want, we can go ahead and make the nomination.
She's already voted.
Oh, she's already nominated. Okay, we'll vote on it at the next meeting. Okay. Any other nominations?
Can we make the nomination for Cable Commission?
Sure.
At this time?
Mm-hmm.
Phineas Cody.
Okay. Nomination was Phineas Cody. Do we have a second?
Four.
He has to fill out this, he has to fill out the application.
Yeah, he has to fill out his paperwork still, but as long as we're doing it, we might as well all do it now and get all that together and vote on all of that.
Yep, so we have some votes next meeting, huh? Okay, so he, Phineas is nominated, we'll make sure to get his paperwork in.
Right.
Any other nominations for Boards and Commissions? Okay. All right, move on down to new business.
Consideration and approval of a street closure on beach between Middlebelt and Northland on September 22nd from 11:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. for a backpack giveaway. The applicant is Tariq Hunter.
Support. Or so moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Passes.
Item B is consideration and approval of a special event on Saturday, October 12th from 2:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. for a costume giveaway presented by the Tax Experts.
So moved.
Support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Passes.
Item C is to consideration and approval to recognize Demands International as a nonprofit organization within the city of Inkster for qualification for a temporary charitable gaming license to host a gift card raffle on September 21st at their Runwalk picnic at Ford Field Park in Dearborn, Michigan.
So moved.
Support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Passes.
Item D is consideration and approval of an offer to purchase six industrial lots, which are located, as duly noted, in the amount of $3,000 to Fred Bishop Jr.
So moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All, discussion, I'm sorry?
No.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Passes.
Item E is consideration and approval of the sale of land to previous owner of the following foreclosed single-family residential property, 1608 Helen, as duly noted, in the amount of $11,246.42, to Jesse Lamorn Whitneer.
So moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion?
We did, we did this before with the applicant.
Oh, yeah, we've done it a few times.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions up here, comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Passes. Public participation. Monet Thomas. Everybody has three minutes in public participation. A clerk will be keeping time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Inkster. My name is Monet Thomas. This I will read from not only my mother, but to citizens of Gertrude Court. "We are the neighbors of Gertrude Court. We are here to demand there's something be done about the pole barn built on Middlebelt Baptist Church on Avondale. This pole barn was not built to city code because it has not have a runoff and it's built on a hill higher than our property, causing water damage along the entire south side of Gertrude Court. The water is causing wetland situation. There are geese, snakes, gophers, and skunks in our backyards because our grass are not cut all the way to our back fence when it rains. The standing water is causing mosquitoes to breed. This has gone on for years, but because of the rain of the months of May, the situation has worsened. Neighbors that have garages have cracks in the cement and damage to the garages. Mrs. Reeves, my mother, who is, has major cracks in her garage on the floor. Some of the cracks on the floor are at least two inches wide from one side of the garage to the other. There is a hole in the back left corner big enough to put my hand in, and the entire garage floor is beyond repair. There's, there was enough water on the floor for the garage to cover the lawn mower, tools. Everything that was in the garage is completely rusted out. A new gazebo that she's purchased, which is still in the box, has been now destroyed. The lawn mower will not start because it has been covered in water. Her entire garage floor has been, was submerged in water and protrude six feet in front of the garage door. Her four-foot fence is now three foot tall because of the mud covering the fence. She had to pay $850 for someone to come out to clean the debris in the backyard because nobody would want to come out there and do anything to that backyard because of it. I feel that the Middlebelt Baptist Church is responsible for all the damage on the south side of Gertrude. Some of our neighbors, which is here today, have lawn services that refuse to go in their backyards because they do not want the damage to their equipment, causing enormous overgrowth. We demand that something be done to correct this entire situation. We have video, I have pictures for this to be corrected. I understand that there's an email that went out, but let me explain something to you. I've come here and I say it in 30 days, I'm back. Nothing still hasn't been done. I haven't seen not one person on this council show up at her house. Not once did she get a phone call, did any of these neighbors get a phone call, an email, or somebody to walk to their house to see what is going on in this backyard and because of what happened, what's going on to this church? Nobody. But yet, you want us to pay taxes, you want us to keep up our yards, but yet we cannot keep up our backyards because nothing is being done. Everybody is passing the buck. The buck stops today. What are you going to do about it besides give an email and ask them to have stuff done? That's not doing anything for the neighbors that are here today for their backyards. Their garages are completely destroyed. Their backyards, their children cannot play in this backyard. Nothing.
Ms. Thomas, your three minutes are up.
Yes, ma'am.
And as I was stating, nothing has been done.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you want me to respond during the comments, but we certainly have been moving. We've had at least four or five meetings with the church. We took the city engineers out, we took the county engineers out, the churches hired an engineering company to look at it from their perspective. We issued a letter, September 12th, a long letter, outlining that they had to repair the situation. I did personally go out myself. I saw your mom's backyard. I went in from the church property and I walked and saw all the backyards that were flooded. What she's saying about the condition is true. There's water, sitting water in the people's backyard. So we did go check it out, we moved them, we gave them, wrote them a letter and let them know they're in violation of the city ordinance, and if they did not repair it, they will be issued a violation, which is the powers that the city has. If they're issued a violation, then they have to go to court and plead their case in front of Judge Johnson with respect to the violation. So they have, I can give you a copy of it if you do not have a copy.
Oh, I have a copy.
Okay.
But it has nine months. Within nine months, their, their, their backyards, their garages is completely destroyed. There's nothing that can be done. I'm afraid that if my mother goes in her garage right now, that thing can collapse. If there's anybody in her backyard, or anybody that's in the backyard that's here today, what's going to happen?
Man, I wish we had more power than we do, but according to the ordinance, we can only do so much. It is a civil matter, though, you already know that.
Mm-hmm.
If someone causes you damage, then you can seek remedy in a civil court. From the city's perspective, we can enforce the city ordinance, which we are going to do. We know it's a problem, there's no question about it. And we're here, we have to try to protect the residents. When we went to talk to the church, their initial reaction, they weren't sure that their situation was causing the flood. So there was some back and forth going back.
I understand. I was there.
I don't know if they're saying they agree at this point, but we basically said, well, this is what it is. We got our engineers involved, with their engineers, to check it out, to try to come to some consensus, and then we brought the county in. So it is what it is, and we went out and contacted, I think Mr. Bivins was over there this weekend, if I'm not mistaken. I just happened to run into him. He went over there to make sure that he hand-delivered this, so they would know what the situation is. Like I said, if they don't remedy it, then we will move and issue a code violation.
Right, after nine months.
No, well, I don't know how fast or slow they're going to move. From their perspective, it, their perspective, it's going to be, it's going to cost a great deal of money to change the situation that is there now. So I don't know what anybody's financial situation is. All I can do is, as the city, is make sure they follow the law. We have to give, quote-unquote, a reasonable amount of time to remedy the situation. The engineers came up with that timeframe, not me. I would love it fixed tomorrow if it was up to me. If it was my backyard, I would want it fixed tomorrow.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Look at her backyard. Look at the backyards of everybody that's on that side. For, if you're going to give them nine months, what's going to happen to the people's garages that are on that block, their backyards? If it still rains up until the next nine months, their garages and their backyards is already destroyed. So that means now we're going to have to come after Inkster.
No, you can come after them. We didn't, you can't come after Inkster.
And why not?
Because we didn't cause the problem. So, I mean...
When we asked and we checked and we asked for somebody to come out, when was the timeframe that anybody came out to the house?
We've been dealing with this all summer. When you contacted me?
When I contacted you, I contacted you at my place of business, correct?
Yes. And somebody was out there probably next week.
The only person that I've been dealing with on a regular basis is Councilman Oden. That is the only person that made any type of effort to come to see anybody on that block, came and took pictures. Everybody came to the church, but nobody has come to anybody on that side of the street. Has anybody from this council, anybody came to my mother's home or anybody's home on that block and say, hey, we see your concerns? Not one.
Well, I know, I went out, our staff went out immediately.
Staff went out.
He just did knock on your mom's door, but he went out to look at the situation and assess it. Trust me, we've been, we've been out several, several times, so we're not ignoring this or kicking it down, kicking the can down the street. We understand it's a problem. I mean, that's a problem. So we went to, we, we went to the church immediately, I met with them personally, along with Mr. Bivins, they had their attorney there. This was not a kumbaya meeting. This was, we're not responsible, we didn't do anything. So the meeting was somewhat contentious, although it was civil. So we have been doing our part, and we just wanted to make sure we got it right. That's where we got the professionals involved, as far as the engineers, to make sure that we're correct in that they're causing this, because they denied it at first.
Oh, I know. I spoke to them just as well as you did. I actually did my homework.
Okay.
So I spoke to everybody and I got my proof. That's why I came to you, because nothing was being done. Everybody's passing the buck here, and the buck is going to stop.
Well, the buck is on them. I mean, this, they caused, if they caused the problem.
As I said, the buck is going to stop and it's going to stop today.
All right.
As long as I got breath in my body and the members of Gertrude Court, we're going to stand together and we're going to make sure that this is taken care of for the residents because this is your city just as well as it is ours.
Absolutely.
So I'm not asking, we're demanding now the stuff getting done.
It's done, it's already done. They have to fix it now. So that's on them.
I'll see you in nine months.
Okay.
And I'll see you before then, too.
I'm sure.
Have a good day.
You, too.
Portia Bonner.
How are you?
Good, are you?
I'm fine. So, I'm, good evening, everyone. I'm piggybacking on my neighbor. I live on Gertrude Court as well, and our backyards are always flooded and, I don't know, you know, snakes, water, you can't get the grass cut, and then Middlebelt Baptist, they won't, you know, when, when it does dry out, they won't take care of their fence line. They won't do anything. I had to ask one of the young men to please come over and weed whack on their side of the fence because I can only keep up my yard, I can't keep up their.
Right.
And it's very low-lying, so I don't know if that's the city or Middlebelt, the whole perimeter of Middlebelt, from Middlebelt all the way around the U-shaped circle to all the neighbors, it's, it's sinking, it's all the way.
I know. I was out there in the mud.
My neighbors right here, I mean, Jennifer has a diamond-shaped backyard, this, speak up, Jennifer.
I've lost about half of my backyard from, as soon as the snow starts to melt, all the way through the end of the month of July is the first time that my lawn worker can get all the way back to cut my yard. So I have grass, you know, just tall because he can't get his equipment back there, even with a push mower, he can't get it back there, not only just the heavy equipment, but it's gotten worse and worse over the years. It's not, the barn has made it worse, but that whole field behind their church goes like this.
Yeah.
And I'm on the, I'm on the court and it's...
It's sinking, yeah.
Oh, I mean, I know, I saw, I was out there.
The whole property is sinking.
So it needs grading up, something to build that back up because...
And that's, those are the conversations we had.
Yeah.
And it looked like a swamp land.
It's bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, the letter?
The letter.
How many copies, you mean? What make copies?
Uh, what do you guys think so?
You got it? Give her yours? Okay.
So, we just want, you know, if somebody can address, it's been like this, the barn made it worse, but it's been in bad shape for a while. I have cracks in my garage, too, and I just had new siding put on, so I'm trying to keep up my property, and we pay taxes, so, you know, I mean, you know, everybody has to pay taxes, but we was like, what are we, you know, we need something. You know, it's like, it's like...
I'm not trying to pile on.
You know what I mean?
It's definitely a problem.
Yeah, it's a problem. That's, it's bad, so that's all I have to say, but on behalf of my neighbor.
Thank you.
Could you come up to the podium, please?
She got me out here, she's sitting. Go ahead, Regina.
My name is Regina Lewis. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Oh. Hello, everybody. My name is Regina Lewis, and I'm a Gertrude Court resident for 25 years, and I watched this for over 10 years, and, but my concern right now is to ask you guys, with the damage of their garage, can you have your inspector come over to make sure that it does not fall down on somebody, or if someone happened to go back there, or, I don't want the garage to collapse. So that's, y'all need to get that checked out, make sure, ordinance, make sure that the garages don't collapse.
Okay, so that's more, that's a building function? You talk, everybody who lives on the court, right?
Yes, sir.
On the south side of the court?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because it's being damaged by the water.
Right.
Yeah, it's standing water.
Right.
It's bad, but you all know, it's, it's like a lake.
Okay.
We don't have lakes in Inkster.
My building officials are out here, but we will meet tomorrow morning because we have a staff meeting, and let me lay it out to him, and I'll get all the addresses and make sure, and see if he can go over and take a look at this. and, and see if he can go over and take a look at this stuff.
Thank you.
Make sure it's safe.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Appreciate you.
My garage is closer to the gate.
What's your name, please?
Anna Davis.
Okay.
My garage is closer to the gate, so I have to wear the gate, the middle part of the garage is where I have to start cutting my grass. I can't go all the way back to the gate.
I see.
And that's, that's all goes all the way up into July. So, it's, it's rough.
Oh, yeah. It's not good.
No, it's not. It's not.
Hello, Jennifer Martinez. Um, I was already said that it's my, my backyard. I'm on the circle at the end, so I do have a pie-shaped yard, like Portia said, and it's, it's, over the years, it's completely eroded because that field is so low. It also floods the houses that are on, is that eastern right there? It also floods those houses, those backyards as well. But I just wanted to point out that I know, uh, a year ago, my lawn guy's, uh, equipment was in the shop, so he couldn't mow the front, my front yard. And the city, right quick, within a week, issued me a citation. So, I'd like to understand how they get nine months when I had like a week to remedy mine, or I was gonna be fined. So, I just wanna just call that out, that the city's very quick to action when somebody doesn't mow their grass for a week, but maybe not so much. This has been going on for, I've lived there for twenty years. It's been going on the entire time I've lived there, and it's just progressively gotten worse. I had a contractor come out and they told me it was gonna cut, take about twenty dump trucks full of dirt to build my yard back up where it's eroded from that.
And that's just your yard?
That's just mine.
And that's why they have a period of time to get it remedied? Because how big of a job it's gonna be. It's different, drastically different from someone not cutting their grass. Um, because you can cut your grass, if you got a lot more pace, why don't you cut your grass? This situation is gonna cost money.
Right.
I mean, a whole bunch of money.
Right.
You're talking about hiring an engineer, design it, come to the city, get it approved, go back, do the work, get it inspected, make sure it's, that's why they have a longer period of time.
Right. No, I understand. I'm just pointing out the fact that things can happen very quickly in certain scenarios, and it doesn't seem so much in others, but... What?
Her grass?
Oh, I didn't pay for that. I didn't pay for that. No. Not until, not until the sides of Middlebelt, not until the sides of Middlebelt are mowed on a regular basis, will I pay a fee for having my grass too long for a week.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Just as far as when you look at the map where they are, and it says Carver Drain, which is not actual man-made drain. I think it's just runoff and things that are natured. Um, over time, do those just fill in from elements and everything like that?
Uh, you ask, I'm not an engineer, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
I just go ask, can you bring it up to him?
I read the memo. Um... He was asking about the drainage. Um, we received in our packet some information about the, the drainage was originally, uh, put there in nineteen fifty-seven. Um, and then it was later abandoned, I believe, by the county and in the city. Uh, not the city, but it was a bad, later abandoned. So, he was asking, could it be some other cause to the flooding? And so, I'm not an engineer, so I can't. The engineers did address it and they came up with what they thought. And it, we do have it in writing, but, you know, that's, that's not my thing. Okay. Officer Hay, Hayward. Where'd he go? Oh, okay. He got a little more pepper in his step today.
A little more medicine. Good evening, uh, mayor, council, and, uh, citizens of Inkster. Um, I'm Officer Hayward. Um, got a couple of announcements, uh, to make tonight. The first one is, uh, Inkster Field Injected Carnival Two, um, it's gonna, uh, classic car and motorcycle show. It's gonna be Saturday between three and seven P.M. at, uh, the corner of Inkster and Michigan Avenue at the Inkster Plaza, uh, over near, um, uh, not, not the Ozone. O'Reilly, in the post office. So, it's gonna be between three and seven P.M. Um, if anybody wants to register their car or motorcycle, there's a ten-dollar fee, registration fee. There's also gonna be, um, we're gonna have, uh, a couple of, uh, awards, a couple of raffles, um, that'll be there. We should have, uh, food there also too, and we're gonna have a DJ, uh, for entertainment. And that's, uh, Saturday, the twenty-first, between three and seven P.M. Hope everybody can come out to, uh, support it. It's an Inkster event. Um, just want everybody to come out and support it.
Okay.
Okay. The next one, our next agenda is, um, on the agenda, uh, it's, uh, September eighteenth. It's again, it's our Coffee with a Cop. Um, no agenda or speeches. Um, it's a variant, very, um, uninformal, um, informal. Um, just come out, just, I want the citizens to come out. They can, uh, ask questions of the, uh, police department, any questions they may have. We also have our code enforcement officer. She, she comes out also. So, if anybody got any questions about code enforcement or, uh, police-related matters, you can come out. Uh, it's free coffee, and it's gonna be at the Applewood Coney Island, located at twenty-eight six forty Michigan Avenue. Um, uh, we usually have, like I said, coffee and refreshments. It's very, uh, uh, it's a very good place to come for the citizens who actually wanna, got questions that wanna get them answered. Uh, we're honest, we, we're, we're in, with, uh, in our answers. Um, so, just come out and support the Coffee with a Cop. Again, that's September eighteenth at ten A.M. in Applewood Coney Island. And lastly, um, this is, um, our second to the last movie night that we'll be having this year. And that's gonna be, uh, Friday, September twenty-seventh at seven forty-five P.M. Um, like always, we have free popcorns, snow cones, hot dogs, and refreshments. Um, we're gonna be watching The Secret Life, Life of Pets Two. Um, we watched The Secret Life of Pets, the last one, so that was a... So, we're gonna do two this time. It's, it's gonna keep it moving. It's gonna keep it moving. Um, so, anybody, uh, again, uh, we be, it's gonna be outside in the police department and court parking lot. Uh, dress for the weather. Bring your chair and blankets. Uh, there'd be free food, popcorn, prizes for the kids, bikes for the kids. Um, and it's for all ages too. So, again, it's September twenty-seventh at seven forty-five in the court parking lot. That's, and that's if it doesn't rain. As of now, it looks like it's not gonna, well, I can't say for now. So, I'm gonna hope that it doesn't rain, cause it's, we have one more after that, and that'll be for the Halloween, um, in October. So, if anybody can come out, we all have a good time. Come out and support. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Gabe Henderson.
Good evening, family. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Yeah, and I falsely accused you, uh, mayor, of something that I just recently saw, but I got that corrected. That beautiful purple, uh, sign of Middle Park Manor Block Club, you know, beautiful, you know? I thought it was in, you know, in matching with somebody's beautiful purple door, but I found out, well, anyway...
Middle Manor picked that call.
Well, hello, fam. I, I'm here, you know, for the, uh, Inkster beautification. Uh, we coming to the end of, uh, uh, our run of the dumpsters at the different sites, uh, September the twenty-eighth, be, uh, okay. That's our last date for this year. We have, uh, Wheatley Park. Okay, okay. Wheat, Wheatley, Wheatley Park. Okay, let me leave that thing alone. Wheatley Park, Lamone Park, okay, uh, uh, Dozier and Westwood Park. So, we have dumpster there the twenty-eighth, uh, September. And I think we've been doing a pretty good, uh, job trying to, you know, clean up the community. Uh, and, um, so, we wanted to thank you for that, those who've been helping out, you know, been coming up to there. We have, we supply gloves, uh, bags, and water and stuff like that. We've been, had few people, uh, have, uh, adopted certain areas that they were cleaning up. We wanna thank you for that. And that is about, uh, you know, I just thinking about the, I worked on a lot of some systems, you know? Uh, drainage systems and all that, even, uh, coming off of, uh, large areas with a lot of flooding, like in the monsoons of Vietnam, off of areas drifting forward. I know there's a lot of problems that in that area, you might have to put a, a, a major drainage catch system in and take it out. Well, I don't know, the area's not as large for a retention area. I know a lot of people like, uh, uh, Burger Baler, they put in a retention system and all that. I, I know, uh, Wayne County started finding, uh, uh, people who have large areas and all that based upon the square area, you know, runoff into the system, so I don't know. It, it can be corrected, but it has to be corrected, cause I, it's sad, you know? People's property, you know, is being damaged, so, but it's a couple of things you can look at, and, uh, and we can correct it. And thank you. Love you.
Alright, love you too. Barbara Cooper.
Good evening, mayor, council, and the residents...